Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 15th at slightly after 7:00 PM. We have three committee council meeting committees tonight planning on development, City and Safety Services, and then Finance and Personnel. I might note that I know that a number of you are here in support of the Farmer's Market, which will come up as our second committee meeting discussion. If several, if any of you are here perhaps to make a comment about the pool, we would let you know that the discussion, the full discussion for that item is going to be on September 28th, two weeks from tonight. So just wanted to, didn't want anybody to be sitting here waiting and then disappointed that we're not bringing it up for discussion tonight. Our first committee will then be Planning and Development chaired by Councilmember Fall.
First on our agenda tonight is looking at a resolution to note the city's services for an annexation that's now in process out on Lorik Road. We have Rusty Rittenhouse here to describe it and talk about what we have to do. This is one of the first steps in a multi-step thing that one has to do to annex property into the city.
Rusty knows the routine of printing his name before he speaks, and that will be the same for any of you who speak later tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out tonight. My name is Rusty Rittenhouse. I'm an attorney at Lavell &amp; Associates, 449 East State Street, Athens, Ohio. I'm representing the property owners of some property out on Lorik Road as well as the potential buyer. My client Gary Gettletz is here as well and is prepared to talk a little bit about what his proposed project is. We're doing an expedited type-two annexation. It's a statutory procedure to take property that's not currently in the city of Athens and make it part of the city of Athens. As part of that, we need an agreement from the city that they would be willing to provide certain services to the property, which would include water, sewer, fire protection, and police protection. And for that reason, I'm here tonight asking for a resolution indicating that you would be willing to provide those services. Now, the, I'm not asking for the annexation to grant it tonight. I still have a number of other hurdles to go through with the county commissioners and the trustees. That would be at a later date. All I'm asking for tonight is for a resolution and again, you would be willing to provide these services if I get past the other hurdles. The last one of these I did was for the brewery that's out on Armittage Road. I think it's called Little Fish Brewery, and it was wonderful. Turned out really well. When we did that, there's one other entity that's involved in all that, and it's LIAX. We did that, there was a single residential tap on the property, and LIAX indicated they would like some money in order to release their rights to provide water to that property. We came into this with the same impression, well, this property that we're dealing with doesn't currently have any taps on the property. We'll just have a similar scenario. Well, it turns out, the number that LIAX is asking for is substantially higher than what they did the last time. And we're trying to negotiate with them about that. In fact, tonight, they're meeting at the same time you are to give me a final proposal of what the number is. But instead of just my traditional request would be the providing services contingent on a release from LIAX, I'm asking for two possible options. One would be, we would do what traditionally we would, would we obtain a release from LIAX by giving them some money and they would release their rights to provide water. And the alternative, and this is what LIAX, I think, wants, is an agreement to be worked out with the city where they would continue to provide water to the property and the city would provide sewer. I spoke to John Simpson from LIAX, and he gave me a brief description of how that would work, how the billing would work. He indicated it's worked in other areas in the city of Athens, including properties on Dairy Lane and Stages Daycare. He mentioned a few others. He also indicated that Albany does this, Logan does this, and they're going to have a similar situation worked out with the potential expansion of the sewer out on Radford Road. So I, my proposed resolution is the, I'd ask the city to grant that, and the providing water would be contingent on one of those occurrences being completed, either us obtaining a release from LIAX or working out a deal with LIAX and the city who would provide services.
So does that make sense going? I think it's somewhat different than a normal annexation resolution. I should point out that this does not necessarily mean that the annexation goes all the way forward, as Rusty indicated. And I have received, you know, information from the various departments concerning fire safety. They're, they're have okay, signed off on this. Andy Stone has concerns about being able to have certain types of facilities and development occur to either provide water and provide sewer, which is part of the design, and that's also part of the annexation process. It doesn't preclude having anything occur out on the property. It's just this kind of odd situation with LIAX that's out of the norm.
Mr. Rittenhouse, you mentioned a minute ago, but you said Albany was one, that there had this kind of an agreement where it was kind of a LIAX, and I imagine Albany's own wastewater treatment facility out there.
Yeah, I think Albany provides the sewer and LIAX provides the water. Did you guys receive the letter from John Simpson where he described how they do that in Albany and Logan?
I was just curious, does Albany, does Albany have a water treatment plant?
I don't believe they do, but I don't know if it's.
So it's not so much that it's unique, it's just that they do have sewer, but they don't have water, and therefore the agreement is, is, it is what it is, where this is somewhat different in the city of Athens.
I think one of the concerns is engineering, what needs to be engineered out there, also billing. And I think that with the other situations, such as with the dairy barn, that the billing has been figured out for LIAX and the city.
And have we received feedback from city administration about the billing, about if it would go the way of staying with LIAX water? And then my other second part of that question would be fire protection.
The fire chief has said that there is no concern. The, I think that the billing could be resolved. The city administration has, Paula has indicated that. Andy had several technical design issues that need to be addressed, but that would be, no matter who is providing the water, it's just that that's part of developing this property.
Question. Clarify for me, does the police chief or fire chief say that it's adequate if they're using LIAX system, or is it adequate if they use our system, or are both adequate?
Oh, you mean like water pressure and stuff?
Uh huh. Because I know at the dairy barn, they're on LIAX and the pressure is insufficient.
Right. He did not, he did not mention either way in the.
Conversation as staff, there was concern of not so much capacity, but pressure in terms of flow. But again, it's, nothing's really built there, so they could have to, they'd have to build to, you know, sprinkler systems and hydrants, et cetera. The, the view really, from our point of view, is to keep it clean, and we do water and sewer, just because there, there always are a little bit of a, you know, trade-off on that when you're starting to mingle these two activities. Again, the policy guidelines we have for annexation is that any sewer system has to use our water system. So this is a, this is a shift of what we're looking at. And again, it has to do with the cost that the negotiations are going on with the property owners, obviously, in the annexation. Right now, as Rusty said, there's not much infrastructure there because it's all empty land. We have the capacity there from University Estates. We have actually more than enough capacity there, so that's, that shouldn't be the problem. Again, the view from this administration is that we prefer to do the water and sewer because that's our policy in place. As for flow, they can probably build it. I do not know what lines go to that area exactly. I'm sure that they, it may be, they could backtrack it all the way. Of course, there'd probably be the cost of the developer as well on that piece, unless they have a different arrangement.
And that would be, you know, with any annexation that we go forward with, I think that the key point is this LIAX and the city and the developing, the landowner and such, having to, mostly the landowner and LIAX coming to an agreement. I personally would hope that, you know, they would be supportive, LIAX would be supportive of, you know, increased commercial and residential development, reasonable in their release. But we don't have, the city doesn't have, let's say, over that negotiation, this resolution would not, if the city thought that it was not in, it wouldn't preclude the city not annexing the piece of property, I guess is the thing.
So the resolution though says either upon written confirmation that a release has been secured from LIAX, or in the alternative, an acceptable arrangement for the LIAX water district to supply water to the property. And you're saying it would depend in part on what LIAX says, but if we pass this tonight with the wording in it, or in the alternative, are we in concept agreeing if they said it has to be that we stay with LIAX? Have we bound ourselves to that by the wording in this resolution?
Lisa did look at this. From my understanding, that an acceptable arrangement means that it's an acceptable arrangement to us because ultimately, council can deny the annexation.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is not giving away any of our powers in the future, so.
I just, by doing this, I just wanted an opportunity to at least open a dialogue between the city of Athens and LIAX. You don't have to make a decision on that issue tonight. All you're saying is, we will provide you water if you successfully accomplish one of two things, either get the release or get LIAX to enter an agreement that's satisfactory to you.
In the staff, of course, there are always considerations and concerns from both police and fire in terms of response time, do the railroad tracks intervene between that? No difference in University Estates. I think the, the letter from Andy also pointed out that we did have a lawsuit with LIAX at one time about University Estates, who took over the water on that. I would agree that it's, has to be an acceptable conclusion from our point of view as well as LIAX. I'd also point out, if I understand, that one reading resolution is not binding, so we have the ability to.
It's a three-reading resolution.
It's a three-reading. Are you suspending rules on it tonight?
Yes, because of the timeline that's required by ORC.
Okay, good to know.
Maybe I missed this, but what's the intended usage of this?
There's a map. I don't know if we can pull it up.
This might be a good time for me to turn things over to Mr. Gettletz, and he can give you a brief summary of what his proposed use of the property.
Pleasure to be here. My name's Gary Gettletz. I'm a developer, have developed the reserve at the Falls apartment complex in the University Estates area. And what we plan on doing is having a mixed use of a multifamily, which will be very small, not an apartment complex, but a condominium project. And also, on the front part, and the major part, is approximately 25,000 to 36,000 square feet of medical and professional office buildings. And our intent is to kind of wrap it around the existing pond that's there and make a very low-key type of structure that will work well into the environment and be using that pond as a water feature. Anything else I can add about it at this point?
I would point out that this is probably a pretty good use of the property. I mean, we're talking about, not a hard industry, we're talking about pretty much high-paying jobs in that sense. So there's a lot to favor this. I would be remiss if I did not mention that. Again, my concern is the mix of water versus sewer.
And I agree. I think that is a concern. However, you know, I think that we have, we do have a policy, but it seems that sometimes situations lend, as long as you go forward with the knowledge that there are concerns about them.
I would like to, I'm in agreement with both the mayor and Chris with what you're saying. I mean, I, I think, given what you were just saying, that this could be, could be professional medical, you know, we already have one across the street up at University Estates. I think it's appropriate use of that space as well, but I do have concern over the mix of water and sewer, especially for an annexation of this size and its potential growth, that that's where I do have concern.
We understand, and it's sort of like, we have to take one step before we can get that step answered, and, and that is a major step. We, we're well aware of it.
And one reason why we have to go forward with this resolution is that there are time limits that are put upon our answering annexation requests. Otherwise, we could, you know, do three readings on it, but there are, it's a really tight timeline that is given to us, statutory.
I revise.
Yeah.
Just to kind of clarify, help from Mayor Patterson, I'm not sure what the concern is of mixing the water and sewer, because this, this has been done before, you know, in different parts of the county has been done, and there seems to have been no problems with it. So I'm just, I'm not sure what the concerns would be.
To address your question, I mean, my, the one concern that I do have is the fact that the city of Athens does have a water treatment plant, so we already provide our own water, and if we start having this mix of who's receiving Athens water versus LIAX versus anybody else just coming into the mix, and I would also argue that what you're familiar with throughout the rest of the county, there are not a lot of water treatment plants throughout our county, save Nelsonville, us, and probably a couple other, you know, smaller municipalities. So it's, it's probably more common that there's a mix. That's again, my perception of things and mine alone. Mayor?
Part of the dialogue with, with Director Stone was that we have the capacity, we're actually underutilized now until phases, the further phases of University Estate get in place, so we could see where we'd like to ramp up the abilities. This is technically, because it's empty property, is pretty much an open territory, so either fill it or LIAX does. So if you're talking about expansion of the city or even that discussion of that, further down the line, if you read the narrative, I think from Andy is that, you know, eventually they'll have to do a traffic study for an opening, and it's good that they have clear plans of what they have to do because that would give you an idea of what kind of traffic flow. There's some dialogue with the township trustees, raise concerns on who maintains Lorik Road after we annex portions of that, but that's further down the line. Again, what we're looking at is clear, open space, that, you know, there's a dollar, it seems to be a high dollar amount attached to the development of that from LIAX's point of view. And that's a dialogue between the developer and LIAX, really, from our point of view, you know, how much they knock it down and what they see. But again, we have the capacity, we have the, we have the place, we have the University Estates pump station in place as well, so we would lean towards, as administration, to actually run it all.
And I, and I think that the developer and such knows that that is our, that would be our priority, would be to keep everything under our management. However, I think being realistic and certain, when you're going out on edges of your city, there are sometimes difficult development issues. And so I think this is trying to answer the questions that have been raised by our various city administration, but also trying to, you know, provide answers for taxpayers and developers, so.
Thank you.
I have a few concerns just regarding the process of potentially suspending the rules. I do represent the first ward, and this would be within that realm, territory, and I would, I think I would be curious to hear of input from the community members that reside there or within the ward, whether or not there's concerns or worries or fears, or support for annexation and potential development.
I think that this resolution is one of three, four steps that one has to take. It will go before.
So we have time.
The planning commission. This is just a resolution that's required by the ORC in a very short amount of time that says, yeah, well, the annexation makes sense for the city. Why go ahead with the annexation process if the city's going to turn around and say, oh, you know, we don't want to deal with it? And so this is saying outright, yeah, this is, this can be done. And then the whole other annexation, we have to accept the annexation and the planning commissions, looking at the planning commission zoning of it and such. So it's a, you know, there's going to be other steps that will have public input.
And thank you for reminding me.
And we have, we have two, at least two public hearings on it.
And it does say in section two, the resolution's not intend, intended to eliminate the obligation of the city to accept the proposed.
Right. So there are public hearings required.
Said proposed annexation.
Right. Public hearings required by both the planning commission and city council concerning it. So, okay. Any other questions?
I think I overlooked the said resolution rather than ordinance.
It's a convoluted process, to tell you the truth.
Thank you.
Okay, I will bring that resolution in our special session tonight. You know, I don't, I'm the queen of not liking to do suspension, and I'm always saying that. And part of that is the ORC. It gives us 20 days. You know, that is right there, that doesn't allow for very much time. So, okay. Any other questions?
A request, Mr. Gettletz, if you haven't printed your name on our.
I have. Thank you, though.
Okay. My second agenda item is a donation of land, Citizens Bank and such. This is a donation, this is going to be a request from, from the city administration and such for accepting a donation, and unfortunately, I'm going to do a suspension on this too because it's also another time sensitive with grants and development, and I hate it. But this is a piece of property located over in the University Estates that will be for a bike path project that we are developing over there. So, do you have any? Describe it.
Hi, my name is Rusty Rittenhouse. I'm the shift gears. I'm representing Citizens Bank on this one. There is some property that is known as Lot 3, and it actually touches Gary's other property, the Grand Vista Villages in University Estates. My client's looking to donate a portion of the property, which is described as Lot 3A, I don't know if you guys have met, have been surveyed, to the city so that the city could then build a bike path on it. There have been previous discussions about granting an easement for that section, but it didn't make sense in the end because then my client really didn't want to carry the costs of it, not be able to do anything with it for pretty much forever. So it made more sense to donate to the city. All that we'd ask, though, is that the city would take the associated costs. There is a road assessment cost that's associated with that section of the property. I think the roads were redone in University Estates not too long ago. And Mr. Stone might be able to provide you with some additional detail about the quantity. I don't know if he has yet or not.
Right. That's approximately from the development, the assessment that all property owners got when the University Estates roads were brought up to city code. Mayor?
This is, came from the planning commission. I think the only requirement we want is to take away the easement for the bike path that we had put in place. There's a utility easement that goes up this road. Topography-wise, it's pretty much, you know, high elevation. As you probably, if you've gone over that end of town, we're actually developing a HOPE land bike path, this would extend on to that eventually. Armittage, and from Armittage up to University Boulevard, the State Boulevard. It's about 8.8 acres, almost nine acres, but as I said, most of it's vertical. We already have an easement for the water line up there, too.
It is very vertical. It could be a challenging bike path.
Well, that's why we want to take away the easement because we might have to do a few more switchbacks than.
Right. But this is, once again, it's part of our overall plan for bike, bicycle plan for that area, goes in with some of the other grants and developments that we've done with the bike path that's in that area. So we'll plug into our bigger project that we're doing with the further down the line. You could go and do a bike loop with this. Hopefully, at some point, it will also plug into a larger bike path, the Moonville Rail Trail and such, so.
As well as pedestrians, too.
Right.
I did a walk with a doc about two months ago, and there's a doctor up there who walked from there to, I think, to the Peden Stadium, and then proceeded to walk with us another couple miles.
Right. And that does open up for University Estates people who live up there.
And he had to go on 682 to do that.
Yeah, which is scary, so.
Have we, have you received an opinion from Andy Stone, engineer, on the soils up there in that area, too?
This has a, I mean, this has been talked about, we've done that tour and such, so he has the plans for the, he knows what he's going to do that, that area. It just opens now, with a donation and such, we can go ahead with design and such opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A question that you raised, that removing the easement, that we did previously approve.
Removing easement for the bike path.
Right, so.
I think that's been taken away.
Pardon me?
I don't think it was, was it actually recorded, or?
No, it was a survey that was completed, and my client paid to have it redone. So that's, Andy Stone, last looked at on Friday, had one minor change he wanted banned, and I think the survey will have it back to me this week next.
And my only question was whether legislatively, we needed to do anything about.
Well, it's never been platted.
So it's never been platted, so we don't do it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? So I'll bring that forward this evening in our special session, which I hate.
Thank you for your time.
It has to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I now have some exciting revocable licenses to talk. I will not have to do any special sessions on this one, so. As you know, revocable licenses are renewable after 10 years, or after somebody changes the ownership of the property that the revocable license is on. There's three, 108 Sunnyside, which is a fence, the property has changed owners. 270 East State Street, which is a deck use right away, so this is a renewal. And 91 Columbus Road, this is a new request for placement of a sign. So it's for nationwide insurance. These are pretty straightforward. They've been signed off by all the various departments that need to sign off on it in code enforcement. So I'll bring those forward at the next regular session.
Again, this is your jurisdiction, anything in the city right of way, that's not emergency nature, basically, you have to sign off.
Questions about that?
Do you have any miscellaneous?
I did bring forward the bed and breakfast, I think.
Right.
You're not going to cover it today.
Yeah.
But I have to assume you're going to disseminate it to the.
Yes, I will do that this week, so.
We're taking baby steps.
Yes.
Okay.
That's sometimes how that happens, so, thank you.
That's very much. All right. We'll move on with City and Safety Services Committee chair is Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a number of guests here tonight. I said this the first time, I think it was 2013, when the Farmer's Market came to council a long time ago. Our furniture's changed since then, we've kind of moved things around, it's been that long. But the Athens Foundation has been working hard, along with the Farmer's Market vendors and the board and other stakeholders, and asked to come here tonight to speak to, again, what has been a two-year process of looking at a number of things ranging from partnerships and governance to permanent locations for Farmer's Market. So that said, Leslie Schaller, are you going to start us off tonight?
Yes, I think I will kick us off this evening. So good evening, members of council and Mayor Wile.
So good evening, members of council and Mayor Wile. As I've just signed in, I'm Leslie Schaller. I'm representing probably a number of different hats. My business is a vendor at the Athens Farmers Market Association and a member. I also have been a customer at the market since its inception in the summer of 1972. And as many of you know, back in 2004, ACENet started to partner with the market association in this ongoing journey of finding a permanent home for the market association. But tonight, the main presentation, a hat that I'm wearing, as is one of the members of the Athens Foundation Task Force. And many of us are here in the audience this evening. Myself, as well as Laura Black, and city planner Paul Loeb will also be framing part of the slides for our conversation here this evening about the farmers market report. So I know I'm preaching to the choir. We thank you for being such dedicated customers as individuals, as family members to the market, and certainly your support over many years, as well as the administration's support in this process of finding a site for the farmers market, to have a more secure and sustainable home in the coming years. I think, as all of us know, the Athens Farmers Market is an exceptional farmers market. It's nationally renowned. We've done recent customer counts in the last couple of summer months here. It's well-attended. People come from all across the region to shop, to engage with their neighbors, to support all the promise that farmers markets provide. So whether it's preserving our farmland, it has created a lot of local economy stimulus from helping startup businesses in local food really find their customer base, learn how to operate businesses. Certainly, the farm families, many multi-generational farm groups and organizations have really been supportive of the market. I think the other thing that's really spectacular about our market is we've always made sure that it's the crossroads in our community. It's available and accessible for people of all income levels. So it really provides access to fresh nutritious foods that people can find at affordable prices. We've accepted food stamps through a tokens program since 2007. We've had WIC and Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, coupons redeemed at the market for many years as well. So that supports, I think, the overall health and wealth of our community. So, you know, I think as Athens is one of the beacons of sustainability in this part of Ohio, you know, the market is just a really critical piece of the work that many of us have done as partners over the years. You know, here's a beautiful quote, I think, that really sums up the joy of our market, the fact that many people, you know, feel it as a prominent part of their social life, part of that community cohesion, I think, that many of us enjoy. So it's really part, I think, now of this amplified, this acceleration of a local food economy. You know, the farmers market has been incredible in helping businesses expand and start up, but it's also really put Athens on the map as a local food destination. I think if we talk to folks at the Tourism Bureau, you know, they will reiterate what a draw the market is to our part of the state. So here we are again. I know we've come to visit you many times, but the challenge with our current location, I think as everyone knows, is that by the generosity and our continued support through rent, we've been able to work out a relationship with the market on state property owners. But we're getting more and more restricted. You know, as private property owners, they want to further development opportunities in that location. We've also had to change to more restricted hours. So since development has happened in the parking lot, we've gone to operating the market now in the same three-hour block, but ending at noon. And that loss of noon to 1, especially for some of our millennial local food customers, has probably become even more challenging. The other thing is that this incredible growth and exponential, you know, challenges that we've had in terms of our markets are just happening all across the nation. So there's a lot more attention to local food. There's more concern about food and health, safety regulations. So really, the open-air environment that we operate in right now is becoming more and more of a challenge. We've had a great relationship with the Athens City County Health Department. They've certainly always been advocates for our market and has tried to, you know, figure out how to make that regulatory environment as helpful as possible. But we face a lot of changes in the future, and we need a more permanent location. So we came to city council. Many of the representatives who are here, both on the executive committee and in membership, I think, spoke very eloquently to you in the past, saying that we need your help, we need the support of the city of Athens. The Athens Farmers Market Executive Committee really launched the most recent site selection work between 2012 and 2014. And then we've had this really extraordinary partnership with the Athens Foundation. Some of our members reached out to Director Susan Urano because they have such skill in terms of doing an art, art of hosting process, really pulled in a lot more stakeholders, held a number of focus groups. And at this point in time, you know, after the community meetings, we've been able, hopefully, to move forward. And Laura's going to take over from here for these next slides.
Excellent. So in our spirit of community and collaboration, we're collaborating on our presentation. And I'll write my name here, but I'm Laura Black. Like Leslie, I'm wearing several hats. I mean, one hat that I wear is I'm a faculty member in the School of Communication Studies at Ohio University, and my areas of expertise, my research, teaching, things I think about have a lot to do with group dynamics, public dialogue, deliberation. That's been my body of research for the last decade or so. And so in that role, I have been volunteering with the Athens Foundation to try to find ways to engage in facilitation of dialogues in various aspects of our community. Another hat that I wear is a frequent goer of the farmers market, and the folks in these last three rows here will tell you, they see me there with my kids every week, spending lots of money on lots of great stuff. And so when I had the opportunity to work with Susan, Judy, and others at the foundation on a process related to the farmers market, it's been very, very exciting for me. So part of what we did with our process, we began with a large, sheer-scale community meeting, and I'll show some pictures of that in just a minute. This was not like a regulated public meeting offered by the city, but it was something that was really held in the spirit of getting input from many people in the community who care about the farmers market. From there, we created a task force, which, again, we'll talk about in a little more detail. That task force had stakeholders from lots of different sectors. We met monthly. People volunteered their time to do lots of hard work related to this, and we maintained communication with the executive committee from the farmers market. And then just a few days ago, we shared the recommended site with the vendors of the farmers market and received their endorsement to move ahead with talking to you and doing other work that might be needed to pursue the location. In the community dialogue, what we did was to host small group discussions and large group discussions, really around what do we love about the market? What does the market mean for us? What's the vision that we would have for the market in the future? What does it say about Athens? What are we afraid of? What are the challenges? What would we like to see? And we had representatives from the market, food groups, artists, government employees, customers, business, and many others weighed in on their dreams for the market's future. And you can see just a little bit of that here. We also had some of the larger group discussion there. One of the quotes there was, somebody said at the meeting, you know, the Athens Farmers Market is the best thing in Athens. If it gets better, Athens will get even better. So a lot of love. I mean, this whole process has come from a lot of love for the market, a lot of love for Athens. The task force was put together by those of us at the foundation and thinking very carefully about what sectors in our community needed to be represented. So as you can see, there are a lot of people who are vendors at the market or otherwise associated with the market. Some of them are members of the market's executive committee, others are vendors who are not on the executive committee but are dedicated to the success of the market. We have folks from the university community. We have folks from the city. We have folks from the county, and then the facilitators there. And this is the task force that's met monthly for the last year or so. And Steve mentioned this briefly, but in the work that we've done, we've looked at peer markets around the country. We've talked about what our market could look like someday, maybe. We've thought about what are the needs of the market, what kind of partnerships could be involved. And all of that conversation is still in sort of hypothetical stages. But the site selection process has been very rigorous and is the process that we want to talk about in more detail today. So I'm going to turn it over to Paul after I write my name here to talk about that.
I have a last one from you two chairs?
I'll come back up at the end if you'd like.
Three more?
Yeah, I can come back up at the end for the last two slides.
Hi. Good evening, council. Paul Loeb, I'll put my name in here. 15 Old Coach Road, Athens, Ohio 45701. I am the planner for the city of Athens, as many of you may know. And I am also been serving on this task force with the, that the Athens Foundation put together in coordination with the Athens Farmers Market. I was a part of, we broke up into a few subcommittees after we had about three or four, maybe even more meetings than that. One of the site committees was, or one of the committees was tasked with identifying the suitable sites. There's a governance, governance committee, I think, a funding committee, and a few others that we haven't met yet as some of these committees in full force because the, what was identified through the beginning of these meetings was that looking at the proper sites is really important to figuring out how to move forward. For example, the cost of real estate is a major factor in how we raise funds to do something, as well looking at pieces of real estate that are for sale today. We might go down a path where we're saying, oh, that looks like a good site, and 15, 30 days in the market, turns out that somebody's already put an offer in it. So then we have to go back to square one. So the farmers market, the committee that we were working with, I think the board, they identified and they tasked us with saying that there's five Ps that needed to be resolved for this process, which made it easy for the task force involved with the site planning. But those five Ps are permanence, and we defined permanence as being a 20-year window. Not saying in perpetuity, but if we can find a location that works for 20 years, then that would satisfy most needs. There's a need for pavement, which has to deal with space, and of course, that other P, parking. And then power and plumbing are keys as well, and Leslie touched on those with respect to health, state health department regulations that have changed. And so we were asked to look at those, and then as we were going through, through those five Ps, another P emerged, and that would be price, which I touched on as well. We had, then there's also some intangibles that we looked at, just kind of taking a deeper dive into that, and that would be location, traffic counts on the corridors that we looked at, and the possibility, or even the availability of the real estate, to see if they were even viable. We could, you know, think of any place in Athens County, but is it actually for sale, or does the property owner interested in having that dialogue or not? And so we looked at those types of intangibles as well. The site selection committee was comprised of Larry Crowdery of Crowdery Farms, who's the Athens Farmers Market president. Is Larry here today? There's Larry. Hi, Larry. Bob Eichenberg, former Athens County planner, and myself, Paul Loeb. We evaluated 14 different sites according to the criteria. We met with key stakeholders to determine the most feasible options for permanent markets. We looked at availability of utilities, the availability of the existing site and the quality of that existing site, whether it was in the city's wellhead protection zone, whether it's in the floodplain. We looked at the corridors that it was in and the traffic counts for those corridors. We were mindful of the fact that the farmers market traditionally has been on East State Street, and East State Street is the main shopping corridor for the region. And because of that, it drives a lot of traffic to that corridor, which is very important for commerce, of course. So we were mindful of those aspects. After going through that long process, we rated things based on the space, the visibility from the, from the road, visibility from town, its accessibility options, whether it could only be serviced by vehicle primarily, or whether it had alternative options, whether its location would be walkable to some, some members of the community, whether its location is adjacent to the city's bike path or the county bike path as well, whether it has the proper utilities, whether it has power, whether plumbing is available, whether sewer is available if needed. And then we ranked them all, basically. We came out with five top sites. And the primary site, the top-ranked site, was the, the open space where the East State Street Dog Park is, on the Athens Community Center campus. That's about a six or seven acre piece of real estate. It is the size of a regulation baseball field. I think center field or right field is 350 feet, which is what you'd see for a major league stadium, at least the current major league stadium, not what we had in the 70s. We had, the other identified sites, the top five, we had that community center location being number one, the old, the Columbia Gas site out on East State Street. I think it's the consortium that owns it now, it's called Ahemski, I believe. The Stimson Avenue Ball Fields, which are owned by Ohio University. That was a site about seven or 10 years ago, was looked at for a senior retirement facility. We were mindful of the fact that Ohio University, going through their master planning process, does have some significant space issues that they're trying to address, and we didn't think that they would be interested in dedicating that much real estate to a non-Ohio University, non-high education function for that permanence, that 20-year window. So that ran, we ran into a problem with that. And then the other site that was identified in our top five is also owned by Ohio University, and that was on West Union Street, near the Athens Behavioral Health Center. That would be adjacent to the river, across the street from roughly Larry's doghouse, if I'm not mistaken. That, too, we ran into that same problem with the university going through their master planning process, that we didn't think that would be a viable location. So all that being said, what we came down to was that, based on the criteria that we were given, based on the real estate that was available, the community center location was being viewed as being the, the most viable. It also brings back into the spirit of the ordinance that is on the books with Athens City Council, stating that the farmers, that the city would host a farmers market, I believe, at the community center. That was identified 10, 15 years ago. I think that was placed on the books. And historically, and originally, the farmers market was hosted at the community center back in the 70s when it first opened. So that is where we came to. Here's a geographic location of it. We've talked about this. It is currently the site of the Dog Park. We've, I've spoken about it, and Bob spoke about it with Rich Campatelli. Had some concerns. We also met with the Recreation Advisory Board to pick their brains a little bit about it. Rich already has identified some potential sites where he could relocate a Dog Park. It's a very large site for a Dog Park. It's about two or three times as large as the West State Street Dog Park, which actually is, is more heavily used. And so from the, the Dog Park usage perspective, we could likely scale down a new Dog Park into something more reasonable and have better utilization of that piece of real estate from this planning process. What we're looking at is just, and the other issue we had that we came up with was traffic. We talked with Andy Stone specifically about that location. We had traffic counts that were done with the Voinovich Center back in, I think, 2013 for the farmers market at its current location. They identified peak Saturdays in August and September, when the produce is in full force and the university's in session, and everybody's back from vacation. And we gave those traffic counts to Andy. They had them broken down by hour, as well, as well as from 8:00, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 in the afternoon, which would also include when the vendors are typically coming, arriving, and leaving. Gave all those counts to Andy. He, the information Andy provided was that the existing traffic light right here is designed and is operating to actually service that much additional traffic at that location today. It just doesn't handle that much traffic today. It handles some traffic, but it's designed to handle more. It handles some traffic, but it's designed to handle more. So from, from the initial perspective, that was one of our biggest concerns, and that was, actually, I first was saying to myself, there's no way that this would handle that traffic. I'm a planner, not an engineer. So when the engineers start crunching their numbers, I'll defer to them on those situations. And he was right. Once he started breaking it down and saying, look, this is what you'd actually have on a per-minute basis or per 90 seconds, is, this is, we're only talking about 25, 30 cars every two to three minutes. He's like, that's what it services right now, or what it can service, but it typically services about a fraction of that. So again, that was our primary location. Am I covering the recommendations?
I can.
Okay, Laura's going to cover those recommendations. I'll allow Laura to cover that. I think I touched on most of it, though.
Yeah, absolutely. So what, what the task force is recommending is that the city consider entering into an agreement or consider allowing us to think what that would look like, I guess, in these next steps, where the farmers market would be the anchor tenant for that piece of property, would still be owned by the city, but the market would be the, the anchor tenant and have a long-term lease, allowing them to use that space and have it be developed for their purpose. But would also allow other available, other uses that would be available for other recreational opportunities during non-market hours. So if they're, if they ended up developing a pavilion, that could then be used for other purposes in times when the market was not operating. Obviously, the dog park would need to be relocated to a suitable location, and as, as Paul mentioned, that was, work's already being sort of thought about in terms of what that might look like. And, and what we would, what we would recommend is that the task force be able to continue its work in working with the, the market and the city and other stakeholders to facilitate a planning and implementation process that's inclusive and collaborative and, and build on the work we've done so far on this project. Just another quote from our folks, showing how much they love the market, says, "Community supports the farmers market, but the community also needs the market. People need something to believe in." So that's the end of our presentation, and we sort of just asked for your consideration of that. And I defer to Steve Patterson for whatever sort of formal language needs to be stated to City Council about what it is that we're recommending.
Thank you, Laura, and Leslie and Paul. I think now we'll open it up to any questions there might be from Council in what you've seen and heard tonight.
I have some questions about looking at that site and potential paving and the increase in runoff and such, that, those sort of things, and using best technology available, because paving technology has changed a lot. And so that would, you know, looking at those issues, because that does, is adjacent to two important facilities in the, well, three important facilities in Athens, you know, sewer site.
Sure.
The bike and the community center.
Mike?
Two things. First off, I noticed, you know, the bottleneck that's down there right now, and how much more that's going to really encapsulate that much more by traffic turning in and out. And I know when that traffic light was put in many years ago, when the Engineers Department was down there, the study that was done, I'm surprised that, and I like to talk to Andy about that, that that's changed, the dynamics of it has changed, is that it would allow more at that time than what it did back then, and we have more traffic now than we did back then. So I, those two concerns I really have about that.
I'm talking.
I'll have to add my two Ts to all the Ps, and that is transportation and traffic. And, you know, I'm a huge fan of the market, would love to see it be part of a city campus down there, be able to walk and bike to the market myself. But as someone who daily sees accidents at that intersection of State and Charles, and who lives essentially across the street from a proposed new location, I'm really worried about the logistics of, of an increase in cars accessing that location. You know, we have, I've experienced a crash at that location myself. It's the highest crash location in the city of Athens. So I'm, I'm frankly surprised to hear that our engineer says it can handle more traffic. Maybe it can, but can it safely handle more traffic? And so, you know, I think we're going to need to look really carefully at how, how we can improve the infrastructure in such a way that we can facilitate that safely, safe flow of traffic, because we have children crossing the street on foot there, on bicycle, and at this point, it's not safe. So adding increased flow concerns me.
I also think, two other things. That, how this impacts the design and grant applications for the 33 East State Street extravaganza that's going to go on. I know that East State Street's on the list to redevelop, and so I think that could probably address some of the issues with traffic. And I would also encourage the committee to meet with FINA, Far East Neighborhood Association, to start the dialogue, because I'm sure that's the largest impact is going to be down there. Where you are located now is, you know, further out, and this is going to move it in. So I would encourage the, the start of that dialogue.
Absolutely.
So that we can answer the questions and they don't, you know, people feel blindsided if they don't.
Yeah. If I can speak to that for just a moment, these, these concerns about traffic and safety are the same concerns that we've had with this process and wanting to make sure. And we also, I've sort of felt like we couldn't take the next step to really assess them until we came and talked to you. So absolutely, we want to figure out how to make this the best, safest, most responsible part of our rec center campus and thinking about how traffic and safety impacts. And that has been foregrounded in our conversations many times. And likewise, we've talked about reaching out to the Far East Side Neighborhood Association and the Near East Side Neighborhood Association, too, to some extent. But the, I agree, the FINA is really central to understanding their perceptions of that site and how it would impact their, their lives. Well, one of the things that some of the, actually, Ed made a really helpful comment in our meeting on Wednesday with the farmers, where he said, you know, there's, there's a, going to lose the sort of drive-by wow of seeing all of the tents, and so what would we do? We'd need to do something about visibility, right? And I think that's another important question that we've asked. But he also pointed out that the presence of the market in that location would be so close to the bike path and within walking distance of so many neighborhoods that that could change the nature of the way that people attended the market to some extent. I don't want to be Pollyannaish about that, but I think we could, it could be part of our sort of sustainability and healthy communities work to have the market be something that many people in those neighborhoods can, can go to without needing to use their cars. But then, of course, that makes the safety even more important for us to investigate, absolutely.
Number Butler.
Thank you. And then the mayor also was going to share, but I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, because I think I'd be remiss in not acknowledging the hard work that everyone put into this. It's a lot of time and energy to do what the task force did and the larger overall group. So I, I think that's huge, and kudos to the time and energy put into that. I, I think this is a vibrant part of our community, as acknowledged, as discussed, as shared many times over, and I want to see it thrive. I wanted to see it become vibrant exponentially. So I'm definitely open-minded to this process and, and I'm curious to see how we progress. I would love to see some more permanence. I've been to other communities in which the farmers market has a home base and permanence, and those communities embrace wholeheartedly, and the fabric becomes even inter, more, intertwined more so with the community. And so I see that growth and potential and positive that can come from this with a sense of permanence. So I'm optimistic from what I'm hearing now and excited about moving forward.
Mayor Wall.
I'm glad you, it's gone this far. Again, this is another use of city property, which is up to Council to say yay and a and give a nod to if they choose to. It will probably take a couple, or at least a year, a couple of years to get this pulled together. The changes, of course, we talk about the diverted diamond that might occur. We really need to repave East State Street anyway. I think it's on a 2017 to 2018 capital improvement schedule. We have the TIF money that will go forward to that. I was kind of surprised at this, this election, because I think at the original dialogue I was hearing for farmers markets, they, they'd like at least a three or four lane car to going in. This East Park Drive is very small, but at the same time, that could be redeveloped, how the parking arrangements would be put in place for, you know, shoppers to come in. I also am aware of the fact that I think, what is Alpaca, the arts group is probably would be dovetailing with this in terms of use, whether the same time or other times. So therefore, we'd get multiple use on this. We get this good, and all likelihood, this is seen from 33, so therefore, the ability to see it would probably be just as, you know, not as great as East State Street, but close to it. This is something that's going to develop past my term of office, so it's up to you guys. I think you should put together a resolution and a working group to say where to go forward on this. Would require probably Rich on it, because we also are going to drop a pool somewhere in there. So there's, there's a lot of things, this, this may be the section that's moving in the next couple of years. We always assume that's going to be on the periphery of our city. Is there a section of redevelopment? We also have to look at floodplain issues. So whatever we construct, it has to be able to handle that along the way. I think it's all to the good. I noted in the past, when the farmers market was at the community center, we had parking issues then, even then, and everybody ended up parking across the street or down by Monroe Muffler, or taking the path down one way or the other. I think bringing it closer to the city is probably going to enhance the amount of non-automobile vehicular traffic in that sense. Again, your concern about Charles Street is a concern. That is one of the, you, you're under Rural Planning Transportation Organization, yet that's one place that just shines out right there. I think a lot of that has to do with the stop-and-go traffic that exists there, the frenzy for shopping almost. But that, you know, we can work that out, I suspect. And again, we'll probably have to end up training, changing some traffic signalization, just as a, you know, as a start. So it's up to you guys. I think it's a good idea. It's a good, it's a good way to move forward on this. Somebody wants to throw some land at us, we'll, we'd go with that, too. I don't see that in the cards right now.
Thank you, Mayor. I think also, oh, number Eisner?
Yeah, I just want to throw my two cents in. Yeah, I, I support this. I think it's a great idea. I agree with the mayor and Councilman Patterson. We should go forward with this. Keep an open mind to it. I don't think there's any problem here that I've heard tonight that can't be overcome. Devils in the details, obviously, but we've handled bigger projects, more insurmountable problems and got over them, so it seems like we should go forward with this.
I know you have something to say, President.
I don't, I don't have a vote in this, but I do want to thank you for the leadership that all of you have shown. It's just been a really interesting process to remember your first presentation a few years ago, and then this group with all kinds of skills coming together and working on this. And the Athens Farmers Market is our gem, so thank you all.
One more thing I'd like to add is thank you to the Athens Foundation. I'm really banging my own drunk since I'm on the board, but the fact is, I, I watched how they can bring all the pieces together on this. And I would really remiss if I didn't mention that the next step, of course, will be fundraising for actually building some structure there. So I'm plugging for, for other.
Is everyone looking at me?
I'm not looking at you.
Leslie's been wanting to raise funds since the beginning. He's very excited. It's wonderful.
There's actually many next steps.
Yes.
Yes, there are.
There are. Many opportunities for inclusion.
Did you have another comment? Another comment from Jennifer.
I do want to just add that we're forgetting about a community garden as well that's also situated back there. I see a fellow community gardener out there, so.
That was noted, too. I just didn't mention it in my presentation.
Right. It's not just dogs. We've got some gardens.
Right. And the site that we're looking at would not change where the community garden is, at least as, as we're sort of recommending.
Okay.
I think the community garden is fantastic to have near the market.
Sure.
And Mary Nally from CFI was like, very enthusiastic about the prospect of having those things connected and close together in more of a community-based center.
I think we have a citizen who'd like to come up and.
May I just, I, I'd really like to, to, to address this to the council more than the farmers market, whom I adore. All of them, of course. My name is Melina Miller. I'm a frequent shopper at the farmers market, always have been. I was on the board of Community Food Initiatives for six years and was one of the members who was instrumental in helping get that garden plot down there, with which we've struggled, Jennifer, for all these years, because it is a flood zone. We've had very, I mean, if it wasn't for the farmers market, you know, my produce is just nothing, year after year after year. So I'm sure Mary Nally is very excited about the possibility. But I used to live on the east side in Chris's district, and I am now currently the vice-chair of FINA. I don't represent FINA this evening. I haven't had an opportunity to speak to my other members about this, but this is a subject, you know, that whole traffic pattern and all of that congestion, we've got to live with it. I'm down there every day, either at the gardens or with my dog. I think there's plenty of sites where we can relocate the dog park, and I personally, you know, it'd be a lot easier stretch for me just to walk across the street to the farmers market, so I would personally love that. But when we first saw, and when I bought my home 10 years ago on Graham Drive, I could turn left onto Graham Drive coming off that freeway. And when I worked at visiting nurses and came home after Applebee's was built and CVS was built and the hotel was built, and all of this ingress and egress, some nights, and this isn't really going to affect the market so much, because they're only open, I think, on Thursday evenings, so, but there would be evenings, that freeway would be backed up all the way, trying to exit that ramp because that light. So I'm counting on you guys, when you say those lights really can be modified to work effectively, to take more traffic, you better be really looking at what goes up the freeway and what comes down, the whole new configuration that's being proposed for that area and what have you, because it's always, it seems to me, the, the horse before the cart. And this is part of why that Stimson Avenue development failed, is because under Mayor Abel's guidance there, you know, they, they were clear that they were never going to put a traffic light in for all of those elderly people to exit and ingress and egress and all that traffic. And that was, for me, a big part of, when I lived over there, why I didn't want that development. And that was my business at the time. So I, I would welcome this project. I would welcome the market so much. I love the market. I would love to have them across the street from me. But sometimes I have to sit such a long time by all those poles in the street, trying to turn left onto Strathmore to get to my home, or at Charles at a light that is just, you know, a bit congestion is, it's really pretty profound. So I hope you guys, you know, will really, really put all of your brilliant minds together and resolve that before, I, I would hate, really, I would hate to see the farmers market take any negative publicity for something like this, because you didn't do your homework well enough. You know what I'm saying here? So please, do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
I, I think, obviously, it's prudent in moving forward in, whether it's a resolution or however we, we decide to move forward, that we have engagement with our city engineer, Andy Stone, involved. I think it would be who of us as well to also have engagement, not only with Arts Parks and Recreation, with Rich Campatelli and, and his staff, but also Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Council. So we have the advisory board, you know, with eyes on and moving forward with this, as well as FINA, the Far East Neighborhood Association being involved in moving forward. I, I feel compelled to, to mention, because it was said, the possibility of, of a pavilion being built in there, that, you know, pavilion is spoken to in our comprehensive plan. It's something that is there, there's an, you know, an interesting collision of what could be in the city. I also would be remiss not to say that being involved as a city council member, as you saw, I was part of, of the stakeholders group. I actually sat on the Governance and Partnership Subcommittee. But it was a fascinating process over the course of a year to go through, where we met monthly, and all of us had homework that we went forward. So it was a, a strong working group, again, and keeping Farmers Market Board deeply entrenched in what was going on. This wasn't done in a vacuum. It was, again, a lot of engagement. To me, it, it felt like, as a seated city council member, but my role also, you know, being the university professor that I am, and a community member, and, you know, a longtime marketeer of the farmers market with children in tow, it, it was a very interesting collaborative process, and that's kind of how I view this. This is a partnership, a potential partnership between the city and farmers market, as well as, under the guidance and guidance that farmer, that the Athens Foundation has provided to everyone who's involved as a stakeholder. I'd also. I'd also be remiss not to point out, I wish we could go back to that slide, but don't, we don't have enough time, is that if you saw that the people that were involved, the stakeholders that were involved in this process, it was everyone from Tom Kostorich, who's Live Happy, Live Healthy Appalachia, to, again, myself, the city planner, you know, former city planner. It was just, the, the people that were involved, it was Leslie Schaller was, was under, up to her knees in this process as well. It was a very interesting process to be involved in, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And I think that it will, I know it will continue to be, if we push forward a resolution to explore the use of the current dog park, which would include finding where are we going to relocate the dog park to through this process.
Well, let me suggest something. That, like annexation, where you kind of say, yeah, this is a really positive sort of project, that needs to have a lot of planning associated with it, but it's a, it's something doable when all the questions are answered. Because I think what I'm hearing from you is you need a yea or nay about whether it's a possibility, and if, you know, it's not, then you need to go and look at the other sites. So what I would suggest is that, that we do like a one-reading resolution. This is that we will go forward with the various planning requirements and the groups to go and, and look at the feasibility, because I, I see that as the next thing. What are the, what's the feasibility of that particular site, and all the other questions that need to be answered before design and development goes forward. That's what I would suggest as the next step. I don't know how, point by point, the resolution needs to be, but...
Sure.
You know, whether we want to make a ad hoc committee, or, or under one of the other committees, do it under planning and development, or...
Well, I'd love to work with you on it. I can dream up a couple of warehouses right now.
So, that's what I would suggest.
Thank you. Thank you very much, because this would come under planning.
Resolution. Yeah. That's what I would suggest. So I think we need to get together and look at wording, bring it forward in the next few, couple of weeks.
Wonderful. Again, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are making me hungry again.
That's what we're here for.
I'm sure.
Any free sample?
No snacks?
No pop-up.
We'll give you a minute or so, if, if you're not inclined to stay for the rest of our meeting.
Thank you all for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
We have other thrilling business items, important ones, but we understand.
We'll be moving on to the finance and committee, and we'll give it...
One miscellaneous?
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
We expect the pumper truck to be arriving soon. I think sometime, actually, I was told this week.
Can we wait, can we wait just a minute until everybody gets out?
We can wait.
Everybody's gone.
And if last one out could close the door for us, please.
And before we go on to finance, we have one miscellaneous item.
I was told that we expect the pumper truck to be arriving, the new pumper truck sometime this week. They still have to have a meeting so they can work out all their, where to put all the equipment on it. Sometime in the future, we'll be having a ceremony. Just to let you know. But the idea is it's in train, it's ready, it's coming, it's coming our way. And we have a bid for the old one, as I think it's the 26th of this month.
With the ceremony, do you get to man the hose?
No, I don't think so. Maybe I can ring a bell.
Can I ask a quick question? Beyond pumper truck, under service, safety. When is the sewer?
Wastewater Treatment Plant?
Yeah. When is, when is that going to be?
They're saying early October. They're still doing, they're still doing negotiations, some of the change orders, from what I can tell.
I just, people have been asking...
It's, it's actually up and running for the most part, but they still have to do a debugs. I was actually asking about the, the Septus Acceptance Process, and mostly because I was at another meeting where they talked about, one of the EPA people talking about how we had a reduction in our interest rates, because we're going to do the Septus system. And I think Andy Stone said they probably wouldn't initiate that till the spring, just because they want to get all the bugs out of the entire system, and have it up and running for a while before they just start adding on other functions. Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll move on to finance and personnel committee with Councilmember Reisner as chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Speaking of fire trucks, pumper trucks, we have to pay for those things. So, we have a notes due, it's coming up, and last year, according to our records and what I got from the city auditor, Kathy Hatch, we put down $50,000 for the ladder truck, and that was a combination of the $25,000. Am I getting that right?
No, $50,000 was what we get from Ohio University.
From Ohio University to help to pray our cost. The auditor is recommending this time that we sort of follow that example, the $50,000. Now we have the, the ladder truck, we had this pumper truck coming in, we had to pay for that. That's another $50,000. So, from our general fund, that's, that's 101. What I'm recommending, and I discussed this with the mayor a little bit, is that it, looking at our unappropriated balance, we, we can afford at this time, we can do the $50,000 that we did last year, thanks to OU, and add an additional $25,000 for each truck, which would make it $75,000 per vehicle, for a total of $150,000 to pay on these notes. And if we do that, we're starting to really hammer this thing down. We're, we're paying them off quicker. And I believe, since we have the funds available, we should take advantage of it. Now, it, it looks good right now, so I'm going to come forward with ordinance next week, recommending that. If in the meantime, we, our figures seem to be a little different, we'll, we'll make a modification, but that's what I'm recommending for this evening.
So, yeah, to reiterate, we, yeah, August unappropriated balance in the 101 general fund is $314,000. It sounds like you're recommending at least 75 for, 75 for the ladder truck.
Ladder truck, yes.
And then 75 for the pumper truck.
Pumper truck.
As that comes due.
Yes.
If I remember, it's due, the day, due dates on this, well, actually, we'll be doing a rollover from, for Hocking Valley Bank.
Yes.
We'll get the low interest.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, I think we're looking at the end of the year, 12, 12, 15. So pretty much we appropriate the money, and then, and then spend it out at that point. And again, this will leave us, if I'm looking at the calculations from the debt schedule from, to support this year, that'll leave us about another $75,000 for the ladder truck. So we'd be able to, if we do another 75 in 2016, we'll be able to pay that down, and we'll just have the pumper truck in place.
Right.
Cognizant of the fact that Chief Ryan would like to see a new pumper truck, another new pumper truck in 2017. And of course, the unknown, of course, is how much, we have a minimum bid for the old pumper truck, which we actually could roll into assisting us in that dollar amount. Again, we don't know if anybody's going to go for it, because we already did that once, and then we showed up. So we either have to reduce it, or, you know, reduce the minimum bid, or hopefully somebody will show up with that dollar.
Madam President.
Two questions. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the $75,000 each, $25,000 of which would represent for each one, the grand total of $50,000 that the university contributes...
That's correct.
...per year...
Yes.
...towards fire safety. And have we received the payment from OU this year? Would be another thing to clarify.
I can't answer. I don't...
Have we received a payment?
Along with...
Don't know. Let me check here.
Third question is the bank, whether or not we were able to confirm the interest rate.
The auditor informed me in an email that she's investigating the Hocking Valley Bank interest rate right now, to see if there's a new rate coming up. So far, they haven't gotten back with her on that, but she promised as soon as she finds out, she'll tell me. She doesn't see any reason why it's going to change off of what we're practically paying about point...
Point three five.
Point three five. Extremely low. So, it's probably a good probability that nothing's going to change at this time.
Okay.
In terms of, if I'm looking at the August reports, there's a year-to-date revenue report for August, and this is dated September 3rd, we have received the $50,000. It's 101-000-464587, donation from OU, $50,000, and we received it.
Okay.
So that's in the pool right now.
Okay, that takes care of the fire department. Wastewater Treatment Plant. The, according to our, the auditor, we paid $100,000 last year on that. That came out of sewer debt fund, 758. Again, the auditor is recommending the same amount for this year. According to her, the, that fund is in good shape, actually better than the general fund. So there's no reason at this time not to take advantage of that and pay what we did last year, $100,000.
And if I remember correctly, this is for the engineering design of the wastewater treatment plant. We have the, we have a discussion whether we should roll it into our debt service, which is the 20-year loan, the 18 million. That's a higher rate, of course, so we could keep rolling this over at a reduced rate, and it wouldn't cost as much in interest. With the debt service that we go through in terms of the, for the 18 million, we can't prepay that. So we're pretty much stuck with that, that dollar amount. I think it's 2.5% or something, I forget the actual percentage there, but, so, it'd be nice if we, before we close that out, we have to make that decision, at the same time rolling it over for $100,000, probably the wise thing to do. Again, I'm not sure if that needs appropriation or not, that's what we'll, you'd have to find out from the auditor.
Okay.
Because if I look at the appropriation, appropriated balance from 01-2014, I do have in that particular fund, let me see if I can find it real quick, the 758, I have $900,000 appropriated in that transaction class. And I was assuming that was for the debt service, but I'd have to go back and look at my notes. And I think that's another one that it would be due at the end of the year, too.
Okay, I have one thing under miscellaneous. From our last week's discussion about the, our non-union employees accrued vacation situation, we, at least I tried to iterate as much as I could, that according to our, our legal advisor, Lisa Lyssel, law director, that only city council has the, the authority and power to work with, or grant benefits to the employees. And that would also include anything related to vacation or accrual, or anything like that. I'm of the opinion at this point that it would be a good idea for city council to pass a, a one-reading resolution, just to affirm the fact that council does have that exclusive authority and power. I think that would lay a lot of fears that some of their, our employees have about, you know, if they don't use it now, they'll lose it. And I think that's causing some chaos with some of our departments, because people are leaving for vacations so that they can use up that time. It's causing some stress with our departments, and I think we could do some things to alleviate that, at least calm the waters down a little bit. So I'm going to introduce a resolution to that effect, after talking with the law director and clerk of council to get the right wording and so on, and introduce it next week. Mr. Mayor?
I, I understand where the, again, the lawyer, attorney Shostak mentioned that he would like to see actually somebody claim a date on that. That, that would reassure a lot of our writing-file workers a lot better. But again, at least the assertion of, of where the control is...
Yes.
...to my mind is important, too. But again, in a perfect world, it would be something where they would feel that they're safe from having to...
I, I understand, understand that.
And I understand you don't want to make a decision quickly.
Right. I'd like to have a little bit more feedback from, from council and, and others about setting a, a date in the future, see what the, the appropriate time would be, how much time is necessary, and so on, before we actually introduce that in the form of an ordinance. Now, that's coming, and that's, we have a date set for that in October. But this is just a feature for right now.
Okay.
Yeah. But that, what you're talking about, we are going to address in October.
Okay, I'm aware that we only have one mechanic for the city's vehicles.
Right.
I'm aware at staff meeting, Director Stone reiterated that we have a skeleton crew doing sewer maintenance at this point on the street.
Right.
So therefore, if there's a problem, we'll try getting to it as best possible. So, I, I guess the concern many of people have is that they're, they are afraid that somebody's going to pull that tripwire, and they're going to lose their time.
Right. Well, this is a committee discussion. Is there any, any discussion on this resolution idea?
I, I concur with you, Councilman Reisner. I, I think it is needed, and I think I would support that ordinance from you.
Okay.
Perhaps you can clarify, what's the difference between the resolution that you're suggesting now and the ordinance to come forth in October?
Well, the resolution right now would just affirm that city council has the exclusive authority to set a deadline or not, to deal with benefits. There seems to be some misconception among the employees that other elected office holders have that authority, when in fact, they don't. Our ordinance in October, what I'm wanting to craft would be one that sets, that sets policy about accrued vacation time, how it can be accrued, and how it can be used, and in what timeframe that it can be used. And for those people who have a, a very large amount, how far into the future will they have in order to utilize it and not lose it? People are looking at, there are, employees are looking at their accrued time as a, as something they've earned. It, it, it's something there, and they should be able to utilize it, and I agree with them 100% on that. But we have to be flexible and to allow those people who have accumulated a great deal of time, the time to use that up, because they're only going to get their last three years of accrued time as a, as a benefit when they retire, or, or leave, leave work. So, that's the difference.
A question that I would have is, you know, what are some of the comparable policies in other cities? Because if you look at other employers, other public employers, for example, public library system, the university, you don't have the same of being able to accrue such large amounts...
That, that is correct, and that is something we have to put into some form of, of policy that be, that will go, that will be true, starting at a certain point in, in the future. From now on, this is the way it will be. This is how accrued time will be counted. But that doesn't deal with the issue that has many of our employees panic, the fact that they've already earned months and months and months of accrued time, and they don't want to lose it. Madam President.
So, if I'm understanding right, the resolution that you're wanting to bring forward right now, to distinguish it from the later resolution, or the ordinance, the resolution now affirms our support of councils, well, it affirms that council is the one responsible for making the final decisions on that. And if I'm sensing, also, we're interested in coming up with a fair and equitable resolution...
Correct.
...ultimately to this. And that the details, then, will be worked out for the non-union, or a policy...
Policy.
...later on, which might be addressed at the time we do the renewal of the non-union fringe benefits package.
That's correct.
And that, and that one would need to, that ordinance would need to be completed by the end of the fiscal year.
That's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
Any other comments on that?
I would just add that one suggestion that I heard from a city administrator is that in an ideal world, you would have, provide several years, so that folks who have been used to this system would have, you know, there would be an attrition.
That's correct.
I realize, you know, but we have to look, balance being able to provide that time, the luxury of that time, with the affordability of, you know, what are, what are these payouts going to look like, worst-case scenario? How much money are we going to be spending? How many people are we expecting to retire this year? And, and what's that dollar amount look like?
Well, anything?
In, in terms of retirement... In, in terms of retirements, we have, we, you know, in many cases, we know some of the retirements are coming forward, other ones we don't, because they don't really have to tell us. The, the cost really comes to a couple of different things. One is, again, we only pay out three years, doesn't matter how much time they put in. Question arises, and this is a conversation I have to have with the supervisor, or the next mayor for that matter, is how to, to span down those times. For the past 20-plus years, they've pretty much let them accrued. Having talked to some of the rank-and-file, they, they want that, they want those extra times besides those three years. They look at that as, if I get injured, I will, you know, get, I'll be able to take my vacation time, I'll be able to take my sick time, and I'll have plenty of time to do that. Rather than, you know, sooner or later, if they run out of comp time, sick time, and vacation time, then, you know, they go into workers' comp, but they still have to pay their COBRA, they still have to pay their PRS, and they look at that as, as an extra cost, with no money coming in. So some of them have banked massive amounts of hours just for that reason, the insecurity of saying, what happens if? Do we punish them for doing that? We're not going to pay them out if they retire tomorrow on this. If they said, okay, I'm leaving six months from now, I want to take six months off. Again, almost all the, the way it's structured is that supervisors say, no, you can't take six months off. You may, you may have accrued six months of vacation time, but you just can't do that. I think the auditor's concern, of course, is, is twofold. One is that that person would be vacant from their position, and we couldn't restaff it because we don't, you know, that person still be there, and therefore, that, that'd be a cost in overtime. As it stands now, we will probably have to put in more extra overtime anyway, just for next year's budget, just because the way this is going to count down. The other one, of course, the argument that the auditor makes, which is, again, legitimate, is the fact that those accrued times earlier in their career when they were taking, for example, $10 an hour, has now, you know, morphed up and elevated to 15 or 20, and therefore, by paying them back for those accrued times, or even spending those overtime pieces for that's extra money, both in time and a half of the overtime, but as well as their, their time that they may actually come in and work overtime, even though they're on vacation, which is happening. So there are, there are commitments in this, and again, this is something that's been going on for 20-plus years, I believe. You know, it's before my time, it's before the auditor's time. We do need to address it, how we address it, you know, the, I, I staff, I'm telling them, there's two extremes, take it, you know, council could say, we're going to cut you off at the knees and take them all away, three years, anything over three years is gone. Or we could say, let's pay it all off now. I mean, those are, that's the range you have. Everything in between is up to your discussion. It is a gray area we have to address. This is why I'm glad Jeff is putting together the, started to look at the benefits package earlier on in the year. October is probably where we want to be when we start looking at this. We'll have to be looking at budget, we'll have to be looking at filling in these little spots that we never really looked at before. Okay? So piece by piece. And having worked for the university, I know they limit it to the number of days. I talked to other people, and they have other, other, you know, ways of dealing with this, too. So we actually have policies right now to, to give somebody sick time if they run out of sick time, so there's that balance, too. There are companies that have gotten away from that, too, because that becomes a, I was talking to one organization, a nonprofit, that says, we're getting away from that because it becomes a, it becomes almost a popularity contest, and who gets it and who doesn't. And there's other ones who are just go out there with their hands out all the time for extra time. So we don't know. It, it will take some work for, for you guys.
Well, thank you. Good comments.
Probably talk too much, so.
I always learn a lot. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on then with our special session, the first item on the agenda being establishing the quorum. We have one council member absent this evening, all others present. And we have an ordinance for second reading, 8415. This is an ordinance authorizing water stabilization repairs to the armory and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Patterson. We have an ordinance for first reading, that was mentioned earlier in our committee. This is 80, ordinance 8615, an ordinance accepting the donation of lot 3A and University Estates by Citizens Bank for the Bike Path Project and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend rules due to miscellaneous planning and grant-making deadlines.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended.
I move that we accept 8615 for the reasons we discussed earlier this evening.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 8615. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion's carried, and the ordinance is adopted. We have a resolution for first reading, a resolution indicating the services the city of Athens will provide for the proposed annexation of approximately 47 acres located on Lurig Road, as requested by the annexation petitioner, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Madam President. I request that we suspend rules on this also, because of the ridiculously small amount of time that the ORC gives us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I move that we accept R1015 for the reasons that we discussed earlier, to reiterate the fact that this is one step of a longer process with annexation, and we will be having public hearings, both at the planning commission and council level, and that this does not require us, if things do not work out, to accept annexation, as per what the resolution says.
Okay. We have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Okay. It probably happened, and I'm too tired at this point. Okay, all those in favor signify. Oh, yes. Further comments?
I hate to do this to Member Fall, but if you would, just for those who are watching tonight, or any
Oh, you want me to read it?
Please, because I think that's important for this particular resolution, since it is being suspended.
Long as my computer doesn't break down again like it did earlier, a resolution indicating the services of the city of Athens will provide for the proposed annexation of approximately 47 acres located on Lurig Road, as requested by the annexation petitioner and declaring an emergency. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, Section 1 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 709.033. The city of Athens hereby states that upon annexation, it will provide water service contingent upon written confirmation that a release has been secured from the Leacs Water District, or in the alternative, an acceptable arrangement for the Leacs District to supply water to the property is established. Sewer service, police, and fire protection to approximately 47 acres, more or less located on Lurig Road, owned by Ronald Hope, et al., situated in Farm Lot 100, Section 22, Town Range 9, Town 9, Range 14, Athens Township, Athens, Ohio, in accordance with the attached legal description, which is attached and could be put on. Further found in affidavit recorded in Book 4, 3, 4, Page 2471. Of the official records of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, in Exhibit B, plat map, attached incorporated herein by reference, Section 2, the resolution is not needed, not intended to eliminate the obligation of the city to accept said proposed annexation and zoning of the area by an appropriate ordinance if released by the county, Athens County Commissioners. In Section 3, this resolution is to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of health, welfare, safety, and residence of the city of Athens in order to meet expedited type-two annexation requirements, and that it shall be in full force and affect on its passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you. Okay. And so we have the motion and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The resolution has passed. And we are now ready to adjourn, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I still move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks.